Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
And Commissioner Rainey.
Present.
And then I am present also. Next item on the agenda is prayer and pledge. If you'll please stand with me, and Commissioner Lucas is going to lead us in a prayer.
You bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this time that we have again tonight to come together. God, with everything going on in our country, God, with the firefighter in Lawrenceburg, the tragic shooting in Florida, God, we just ask for you to be with us, God. Give us the peace that can only come from you. Be with those families that have lost over the last 24 hours, God. Be with us as a community, God, as we make decisions to keep our citizens safe and our children safe, God. Help us tonight as we make the decisions that will affect these citizens. Help us to be, help us to make the best decisions that will affect each and every one. Thank you for being with us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion or changes?
Madam Mayor, I believe 11A under Old Business was, there was a request that it be removed.
Okay. Any other additional changes?
Mayor, one thing, we spoke two weeks ago about a presentation for a sign proposed to be installed at the Nature Center, and I believe we have someone to speak on that tonight. So if we could have them speak under number four and just assign that as presentations, that may give you the ability to hear that before we get into the action items on the agenda.
Okay. Any other changes? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That'll bring us to item number four, presentations.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm Eileen Brogan, and I'm Vice President of Forensically Park. And I was just here to present a sign. I believe that you've seen a picture of it. We proposed that we do this, it's been over a year. And the sign that we presented at that point is a little different from the sign we have now because we didn't get quite as big a grant as we had hoped for. But it's basically the same sign without the big rock wall. It's, and we're donating it. We got a grant from the Middle Tennessee Electric Company, and we are also putting in $500 from our organization's funds to meet the cost. So it's about $2,500, and it's from Signs and Wonders. They're going to be doing the work. And just wanted to let you guys know that it's moving forward. Okay?
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Are you good? Okay, thank you for everything y'all do. We really appreciate your work and your donation.
Thank you.
Item five, citizens' comments.
We have one tonight, Mayor Kel McDowell.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I've been fortunate to meet some of you, and for those I haven't been fortunate to meet yet, I look forward to working with you. I'm Kel McDowell, and I recently joined the team at Williamson, Inc., the Chamber, as the Director of Government Affairs. So I'm serving as a resource and a liaison for our local business community and our local governments and officials as well. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you and look forward to learning from you as well. So overall, just thank you for having me tonight and get to know you all up here very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, awards and recognition. And if we don't have any, we'll move on. Item seven, a public announcement. And none tonight? I know we have a big basketball. Our guys went to write one another game in the district. I don't know, okay. Last night is over, and they weren't, so that's it? They don't go, okay. I was thinking it was a district and they might go to regional or state, but, okay. That's what I was thinking, but we don't know those games. Okay. Staff comments? Okay. Approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We got a first and second, and this will actually be on the consent agenda since the minutes are under that item. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us down to new business. Item A, appoint open seat on the tree board. And didn't we get any? Okay, we're still looking for applications for somebody to serve on the tree board. So if you or a friend or somebody is interested, we'd love to have you. 12B, selection of engineer firm for multimodal grant. Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the board, as you're aware, we are working on a multimodal grant, making improvements on Highway 100. Specifically, we're looking to add sidewalks and additional pedestrian improvements to there. We had some RFQs to come back. We discussed that at our most recent work session two weeks ago. We have on the agenda tonight a selection of that. However, reviewing the process for that, we want to make sure that we don't miss any steps. And just to err on side of caution, rather than ask that you approve one of the eligible contractors for that, that you name a member amongst your board to a committee that we would establish so that the committee can go back and review those. That's the proper method. We got some confirmation from that from the state this week. There's no issue with what we've done so far, but we do want to make sure we move correctly going forward. The request that I have before you tonight is to name Commissioner Lucas to that committee. Commissioner Lucas is your representative to the administrative committee, so it just makes sense that he would go and address that. You certainly can move forward as you would choose. However, given he has been participant in those discussions before and part of that process, it just seems to make sense to do that. So beyond that, you can name who you choose, but we do need to name a person to a selection committee for that project.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first with Vice Mayor Crutcher and a second with Commissioner Rainey. And I guess we'll go to roll call vote because that's where I normally go to. So we'll start with Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Okay, and an aye for me.
Mayor, thank you, and we will follow this up with that selection and have the actual engineering firm selection on our next BOC meeting agenda. Thank you.
Okay. 12C, resolution 04-18.
A resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, designating a fire truck as surplus and authorizing its disposal. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
And Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
And I say aye. That brings us to 12D, resolution 07-17.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the City of Fairview by owner consent and approving a plan of services. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first with Vice Mayor Crutcher and a second with Commissioner Lucas. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
And aye for me. Okay, motion approves. Item 13, city managers' items for discussion.
Mayor, nothing for you tonight except just to reiterate what I mentioned in our work session. Just to thank the staff, our work session we had a few minutes ago was pretty exhaustive. We covered several matters that are approaching some decision time for the city. I appreciate your time doing that, and I appreciate the staff. As I mentioned, they put a lot of work in. We have a pretty good team. And our objective in that is to make sure you have information you need to make decisions to further and grow the city. So just want to take a quick opportunity to thank them and thank you for your additional time to do that. You have a difficult job, and it does not go unnoticed that you take the time to make sure you move those things in appropriate manner, so thank you. That's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. And the city attorney?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and move on to Commissioner Rainey.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lucas?
Only one thing, Mayor. Just want to make an announcement. If there are families that are in need for food, Grace Works is doing a mobile food pantry on March 3rd at 9 o'clock at Fairview Middle School. And that's open to anyone in the community.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Burks?
I want to say thank you to everybody who donated to the local Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts food drive this past weekend. I believe they gathered a little over 1,600 pounds of food on Saturday that was taken to Grace Works. And I would also like to say thank you to our street department who came out and assisted the Lions Club with their fundraiser this Saturday as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to take a few minutes and go over, I've had a couple calls about trash pickup, and you know, I've tried to reach out. I know I forwarded some emails to Mr. Collins about it. It is a concern, and I don't know what's really up, why it seems to be there's trash on our streets. And so I would like for us to kind of look into that and see if there's some ways we can't get some additional help from the county or, you know, look at different ways. I know Vice Mayor suggested something, you know, maybe we could look at the courts and do some volun, you know, some community hours. But I've heard a lot from the citizens, and I just want you to know that I see it and we need to do something. And so with Mr. Collins' help, maybe we can come up with a solution to get a routine pickup because when you drive into our community, the first thing we do not want to see is a bunch of trash. So I appreciate those that have emailed and called with those concerns. I seem to get that regularly, and I just wanted to know that, you know, we will address that. And then also, you know, I know potholes right now are concerned. And believe it or not, Fairview, they've done a great job trying to stay up. But if there is one somewhere that needs to be looked at, feel free to email city staff, and they will get to that as soon as possible. So just wanted to say that, and just my prayers and thoughts are for the community in Florida. And I know Dr. Looney sent out an email today, and they are going to definitely try to do something. Even though we're so blessed to live in Williamson County, and there are plans in place, and they work really hard to keep our kids safe. But Dr. Looney really wanted to, just in light of so many school shootings in 2018, that he wanted to take Monday and just go over, make sure that teachers and staff, and I think there's been invitations to community law enforcement to come in and talk about that and go over our plans. So I applaud Dr. Looney on that decision. Our kids' safety is the most important thing. So anyway, that will be all. If I can get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
Oh, did you have?
I think we were supposed to adjourn to executive session first.
Oh, we are. Okay. Are we having executive session?
I apologize, yes.
Okay, I wasn't aware.
Just potential litigation.
Okay. Okay, well, we will hold off on that motion, and we will go into executive session.
I guess we don't have to wait for Scott to be back in here to get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.